Okay, yours okay?
Yes.
We'll go ahead and call the regular meeting for August thirteenth of the Colfax County Commission to order. At this time, would you please silence any electronic devices? And please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Kern.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the Constitution of America. State of New Mexico, state symbol for purpose function on the United States of America.
All right, we'll move on to item number four, the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, I see on the agenda we would need to strike item number fifteen, which is Discussion Action Raise Program for Matt at the MVDC. And also item number twenty-five, which is Discussion Action Ordinance twenty-two-four dash oh-four, and ordinance establishing an affordable housing plan, defining terms, establishing procedures to administer. That was actually passed at our July twenty-third meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have some changes that need to be made to the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we need to remove agenda items thirty and thirty-one as they are defined as personnel issues. As such, these fall under the authority of the county manager and HR, and should not be discussed by the commission in executive session or in public. Agenda item thirty-one and thirty-two, limited personnel matters, Colfax County manager will like, likewise, need to be removed as well for the following reasons. Vice Chair Kern is violating Colfax County Policies and Procedure or Conflict of Interest and Whistleblower Protection Act, which also provides protection under state and federal law. There is a motion at this time for an injunction on this matter, and this should be dealt with by the court. John Lynn, would you like to confirm that these statements are correct? And give the commission your opinion on this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. On August sixth of this year, on behalf of Colfax County, I filed an emergency motion for preliminary injunction after the county obtained an email from Commissioner Kern indicating that she wanted the exact language of the email. Please add the two following items to the agenda for the August thirteenth meeting. Executive session under the pending or threatening litigation and executive session under personnel matters to discuss the county manager. And basis of the motion is that this county has enacted two resolutions. The first resolution is twenty-two-two dash forty-nine, section four A, which prohibits a decision maker from voting or deciding any employment decisions relating to an individual, including the county manager and the county attorney, when those individuals are involved in an investigation that's contrary to the interest of the decision maker. In addition to which, the county also has a resolution twenty-two, twenty-two-two dash fifty at page two, which specifically provides that no county official or employee may take retaliatory action against a county employee, including the county manager and county attorney, because the employee provided information in good faith in accordance with the provisions of this policy. And finally, New Mexico law at the Whistleblower Protection Act found its ten dash sixteen C dash three prohibits an employer from taking any retaliatory action against a public employee because the public employee communicates to the employer about malfeasance or provides information or testifies before a public body regarding that malfeasance. And the Whistleblower Protection Act actually provides that, to the extent of public employers found to have violated the act, then the county would be liable to that public employee for actual damages, reinstatement, double back pay, and any other compensatory damages along with attorney's fees and costs. And so it's my recommendation that this board prohibit Commissioner Kern from taking any adverse job action against employees that are involved in the ongoing litigation against her and Roadrunner for the misuse of public funds.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Let me ask you, would there be any issue with Commissioner Kern voicing any of her concerns during her commissioner docket?
No, Chairman, I think that she can make whatever statements that she deems appropriate. However, her voting and taking direct adverse action against the employees and violation of the resolution and in violation of state law could be seen as an adverse job action, Commissioner, or term, excuse me.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern, any comment?
Yeah, the only comment I'd like to make at this time is that the reason that I requested those was because the commission was in receipt of some an email, and I wish to be able to discuss that in executive session, not in public. Not to take any adverse action, or, but just simply to be able to discuss that. So no further comments, I'll save it for later.
Thank you. Commissioner Ware, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, so are we striking thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three?
Thirty.
Per the lawyer.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, twenty-five, and fifteen.
Okay, and I would also like to move items number twenty-seven and twenty-six to follow line item seven. So I'll entertain a motion for that, Commissioner Ware.
I'll accept a different amendment.
I'll go ahead and second, Madam Clerk. Yes, yes. Moving on to item number five, approval of works, budget workshop and regular meeting minutes for July twenty-third of twenty-two-four. Commissioners, I just had a few minor corrections, I sent them over to the clerk. There were mostly just grammatical errors, no change in the overall fact of it. Is there any other corrections that need to be made? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So.
Yeah, second, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern. Commissioner Ware.
Yes.
Chairman, true.
Yes.
So you guys are putting all three sets, right? It's not.
Just the two sets, because it's for July twenty-third, twenty-two-fourth. We're not doing the one on the thirtieth.
I thought we had, our workshop was on the nineteenth, wasn't it?
Those two sets of minutes.
Yeah, the budget hearing was on the nineteenth.
So we can approve those.
And then the other, the regular meetings were on the twenty-third, and then we had the one on the thirtieth.
Okay, so we're just approving those for the twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Because that's what is stated on the agenda?
Yeah, because, just because the agenda only calls for the two items, and it's not specific on the dates, I think it's gonna have to include.
Yep.
So the others too, then? Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so next we'll move on to item number six, recognition of visitors. We'll go ahead and hear and start with Mr. Soto's. But first off, if you please speak clearly into your mic for the record, make sure the light is green. I'll go ahead and state who is online, we have Mike Proline with Molsen Corbin, our county engineer, Joelin Martinez, attorney, June Rowe, attorney, Mr. Soto's.
I'm a deal, Soto, IT.
Morning, Mr. You.
Michael Bingon.
Brenda Bingon, resident.
Joel Pafford, resident of Colfax County.
Sarah Torres, Chief Deputy Clerk.
Leonard Baca, County Sheriff.
Beth Dominguez, Lieutenant with the Colfax County Sheriff's Office.
Danielle Avila, Manager's Office.
Michael Pius, residence Colfax County.
Julian Gutierrez, resident of Colfax County.
Warren Walton, resident of Colfax County.
Diane Garcia, Be Hill Maldonado Detention Center.
Todd Tatum, Commissioner-elect.
Nate Sandoval, County Fire Marshal.
Chrissy Graham, Colfax County Assessor.
Glenn Stevens, Road Department.
Debbie Ortiz, GS Program.
Amy Romero with MRS here in Raton.
Tanya Sanchez with MRS Raton.
Thanks.
Roger Smith, Colfax.
Michael Muniz with the Manager's Office.
Robert Johnson, Colfax County resident.
Igor Ibanez, journalist from Adonian.
Thank you all very much for coming, it's appreciated. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes, and public comment is for that, that is not listed already on the agenda. Once we get to that line item, we will allow public comment at that time. So at this time, is there any public comment? If you please just come forward and speak clearly into the mic, Mr. Sandoval.
Good morning, just a couple things. Updates, one is going to be for vector control, the other one's going to be for the fire departments. Just kind of type something up here, so I'll just read it off. What is vector control? For me, it was to kill mosquitoes that are annoying and bite, leave me itchy and uncomfortable. When the need arose for someone to fill a vector control position, I reached out and found someone to wage war against these pests, these little pipsqueak bloodsuckers. We were going to get them all. After all, what was the purpose of an animal that eats blood and leaves an irritating mark after it's had its fill of blood? We researched vector control and found the two main manuals that we needed to become highly trained tactical vampire fly assassins. But pump the brakes, what is vector control, and why is it not called mosquito control? We were very humbled to find out that the being highly trained killers was not the answer at all. We found that vectors are living organisms that transmit infectious pathogens between humans or from animals to humans. There are several types, however, mosquitoes are the most common. In mosquitoes, pathogens need the vector to mature before transmitting to its final host. Interestingly, it's the female that is the biter, and the blood that she obtains is used to produce the eggs. Our responsibilities include the following: planning, document existing, the existence of the problem, identify the source of the problem, i.e. looking for ponds and places where they breed, analyze options of control, develop a budget, which has already been done, secure funding, which is done, and then training personnel, which is at the level that we are at, we did get approval, we are spraying already. But we still are continuously training and are about to take our test to be fully certified to continue doing this process. Another thing we needed to work on is continuous surveillance, so we can still evaluate and make good decisions on how to take care of this problem. Periodic collection of adult mosquitoes for arbovirus testing, so we do need to send them in to see if they are carrying any kind of pathogens and identify those in our area. Selecting some of the best methods to manage the strategies for control, record-keeping, public relations, and continued education. We've learned that there are over two thousand five hundred mosquito species in the world. A hundred and fifty occur in the United States, and fifty-seven of them occur in New Mexico. Twenty-six of the fifty-seven in New Mexico are floodwater mosquitoes or the AEG genus. This type can lay dormant for up to five years and may hatch within a few hours if conditions are favorable. Egg hatch to adult may be completed in ten to fourteen days. The females of this type are fierce, aggressive biters, most active in the evening. If conditions are favorable, they can travel up to a hundred miles from the breeding site. Also, the floodwater type are the Sephora genus. There are six types of this genus found in temporary rain flooded pools or overflow of irrigation water. They have rapid development, egg hatch to adult in as few as five days. Larvae are predaceous to other mosquito larvae. Adult females are vicious, persistent biters. Populations can be large after rainfall. Standing water mosquitoes consist of the following, and seven antifreeze species are found in sunlit or partially shaded pools and seepage areas. This type has a life cycle that can be completed in one to several weeks depending on conditions. Adult females will enter homes in search of a blood meal, and a mated female will hibernate in houses, outbuildings, cellars, caves, and animal burrows. Ten coolax species, which are found in newly created surface pools such as ditches, rain barrels, grassy pools, ornamental ponds, to name a few, and hatch in two to three days. They develop in seven days to greater than four weeks depending on water temperature and food source. The water source can be fresh or saline and can also be foul water. Three species of suylus seda, found in snow pool springs, ground pools, rain barrels, polluted or freshwater. This type is tolerant to cool water temperatures and usually the first library found in spring. The female of this type hibernate, inseminated, and may bite, but prefer other hosts. This was just a brief knowledge dumped on you about the types of mosquitoes. This was just to show that they have different tolerances and cycles, which as vector control, we must understand and maintain control over these vectors. In the past, I figured you just go out and spray insecticide to kill these pests. However, we have learned that there are several methods of vector control. The insecticide is only one small yet very, not very effective method, which is what we've been doing in the past, and that's been spraying a permethrin. Insecticide can only be utilized during peak, the peak hours of vectors feeding habits, and only kill airborne vectors within that timeframe. Yes, it is a noticeable difference, but we have learned that it does not have long-lasting effects. As vectors will have, be hatching a new generation in as little as few days. Just to point out on that, when we spray, we're only allowed to spray once every three to five days. They'd recommend every five days or better, and that's just so that we have time for the UV rays to kill off the permethrin before it starts to drain into our ditches. So rain is also another factor as to why we can't spray all the time. Because this is, it could be detrimental to the environment, as I'm going to continue to read. Insecticides can also have environmental impacts, which limits its use to small doses within a period, allowing fast-developing vectors to recover within the allowable timeframes. Another method we can use that the public can help with is called source reduction, basically removing of breeding habitats, i.e. turn over your buckets, adjust rain gutters to avoid water collecting, dry out or dispose of used tires, do not leave containers outside to collect rainwater, don't allow ponding in your driveway or yard, and keep your grass mowed, and that's just to name a few. If you have a large gathering of water near your house, please report its location to vector control. Also, biological control can greatly reduce the number of breeding vectors. Plant vegetation around your ponds to attract dragonflies. One dragonfly can consume up to a hundred mosquitoes a day. There are seven plants that attract dragonflies, the water lily, arrowhead, black-eyed susan, barrage, picker, pickerel weed, joe-eyed weed, and cattails. There are other vector controller methods, but we'll leave that to vector control. In closing, I would like to advise that even if you do not see vector control out spraying insecticide, which overspraying could lead to environmental issues plus aid in the vectors development of tolerance to the insecticide. We are still doing our part to control vector problem in our area. It does take time. It does take time as we have been gathering information and developing a proper vector control program. With proper information gathering and identification of vectors and their habitats, we can
Mr. Sandoval, can you wrap it up?
Yeah, it's pretty much done here. And then so we do, we do, we are going to need a few things for vector control, but I will get the county manager on that. And I do have a whole nother section here. So and this is just an update on firefighter one and firefighter two. On August 3, 2024, the first firefighter one and firefighter two class to be held outside the State Fire Academy administered the test to the members of the class. This was only one week after the students were taken to Socorro to do their LP inflammable liquid burns. This was a full day event, which took students outside their comfort zone and exposed them to some of the most intense fire conditions most of these students have ever seen. It showed them the importance of trusting their PPE are properly used. It was a dark, or it was a day that teamwork was imperative and that no one would have made it through the day without leaning on your classmates to get through it. The outside temperature was 90 degrees for most of the afternoon. The PPE, when all put together, weighs upwards of 60 pounds and is made of material to keep the heat, to keep out the heat, which in turn keeps it in. They had to work through sweat and limited air and a fogged up mask limited visibility, only to approach a wind-driven black smoke cloud which blotted the sun out of the sky to put the flames out. This was a controlled environment, but an all too real reminder of the reality that these students will face in their journeys as a firefighter. The test consisted of 150-question written exam, then outside to be tested for their abilities to perform their tasks. I'm going to move forward quite a bit on this, but I could not be prouder of the first class, both in our members and the outside agencies who sent students to participate in the academy. The certifications earned are nationally accredited and met all standards put out by NFPA. This class has exceeded my expectations and should be the baseline of the standard we will expect from our departments here in Colfax County. It is my privilege to say that they set the bar has been risen in our that the bar has been risen in our corner of the state, and the only direction we have is up. Citizens of our county should be confident that the response in their departments will contain fully certified and tested firefighters, that the job will be done professionally and professionally. I've always stated that Colfax County has some of the best firefighters in the business, and this class was only a testament of what I knew all along. I do plan on bringing this class to Colfax County at least annually. And I just, I'll leave it off with that, so I don't take up too much time.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. Thank you, Fire Marshal. Ms. Romero.
Good morning, Commissioners. I know I have a limited timeframe this morning. Me being here today is an actually last approach to address the situation and a concern regarding the community custody release program. I did receive the contract. I did look it over. There was some things on the contract that were added in prior to our discussion in July. I know, sorry, that when you had asked if everything on the contract was up to my satisfaction, I agreed yes. There was no changes other than what we addressed that day. And upon reviewing it, there was addendums added in, stipulations that were added in, things that needed to be changed, addressed. And I addressed it with Monte Gore in his office not too long ago. He voiced that I had I guess no justification to make corrections, because when it has to deal with the community custody release program and it has to deal with the courts, I know the judicial system and how the procedures and protocols go with that. Those are the corrections that needed to be made. When they don't pertain to our office or what our program does or the service we provide to the courts, that cannot be in the contract. I cannot sign a contract that is not valid, that is not accurate. However, when I addressed this with Monte Gore, he told me that I had to wait for the next renewal year to make the amendment corrections. I didn't agree with that, because I will not sign something that I don't fall truth with, especially when it comes to the courts. The judicial system is something I hold highly, is something I don't like to play with. I take it very seriously. And when there's our things that are on that contract that does not pertain to our office, those need to be removed. So with that being said, I don't even know, you Commissioners, if you've reviewed that contract thoroughly, because we took it that it was going to be in truth, and it was not. So when I addressed the concerns with Monte Gore on the 7th of August, he gave me ultimatum, either sign it so we can be in a valid contract, and then we could renew the amendment corrections for the next fiscal year. I denied that. That's unethical. And for me to have the ultimatum to serve Colfax County, I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't have my integrity put down for that. My business, my profession, I won't do that. The corrections I had that I submitted to Monte Gore were on a piece of paper that I was going to ask him to clarify for me. There was one major section that was added in there that I cleared out because it had nothing to do with us. It had to do with a prior provider, has nothing to do with us collecting fines and fees for the court and putting it in deposit. That's not our job. That's the court's responsibility. So when I made those corrections, he thought I amended the whole contract, which was not true. There were stipulations in there prior to the discussion I had with your panel, and I believe it was in July. Everything was a nice dissatisfaction, so that's the reason I had to go through the contract very finely to make all the corrections needed, black and white, and no gray areas. Because if there's going to be alters, amendments, and changes without notifying either parties, I cannot sign a contract that's going to be that way.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. So the commission won't, or nor the county manager replies to to public comment, but will address this later in our docket.
Okay, and I just wanted to see, because I have vendors that I have to pay now in July. I can work with August, but since the timeframe had lapsed in June due to the county manager's office, that it was mailed in late, it was addressed to me late. Is there any way that we can get payment so I could pay my vendors for at least the July invoice? And once we make the corrections for the amended agreement, then we can move forward.
Thank you. I'll roll, address it.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Ms. Avila.
Just to follow up and just to make you all aware, there has been no changes, no alterations, no anything to the agreement. I did go over the agreement that was approved in July of 2023 by the commission and also signed by Ms. Romero. It's the same agreement that was approved. Let's see, it looks like the one that was in June. It was not sent late. I actually did send it certified mail return receipt on the 27th. I didn't want any issues, and I wanted to make sure that they did receive the contract. It wasn't picked up until it looks like July 15. And then it wasn't brought to our attention about, you know, some changes or anything like that until last week. So again, I just wanted to make you all aware, there is no changes from last year's contract to this year's contract. So again, thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward on to item number 27. Discussion action to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance 2024-06, an ordinance authorizing the operation of recreational off-highway vehicles and all-terrain vehicles on paved streets owned and controlled by Colfax County for publication. So this is something, Commissioner, I am bringing forward. I was asked by my constituents, this is something that they would like to see. So I've been working with the county attorney, June Rowe, and re-copied an ordinance similar to what is in Taos County. I did ask the county attorney to forward to you an email yesterday showing that this ordinance only goes, I had some questions on it regarding paved roads and what is defined as a paved road. And what I was told is it is actually paved, is not a dirt road. Also on here, I have Mr. Sotos, if you want to scroll down there. It'll show the map of what counties actually allow ATVs within their their districts. And the issue that a lot of my constituents are having is they are on a county road, either going to dump their trash in a subdivision, and they're being pulled over by New Mexico Game and Fish incited for illegally driving their their side-by-sides or ATVs. So with that, I kind of just turn it over. We'll take public comment. Is there any, if you'd like to have public comment, please come up to the mic and speak clearly. Please state your name. Thank you, I'm a down.
Morning Commissioners. Michael Pius, I'm a county resident. When you do register your ATVs as side-by-sides now, the state does give you a license plate, and you have to have insurance, just as you do in a regular motorcycle or a car, and you do have to have a driver's license. So there's been a lot of comment about teenagers going to abuse the system. They're abusing it anyway. So why punish us that are doing it legally to get the driver's license, get the license plate, pay all these fees to the state? You have to buy an off-road tag plus an on-road tag, and they give you a license plate that says paved road. And to do that, you have to have insurance, just like you do on a car or a regular motorcycle, and they consider it a vehicle to drive on the street. You have to have headlights, taillights, windshields, same thing as another car. And it actually is given to you by the MVD when you register, and everything is listed on the Game and Fish website what is required. If kids are under 18, they have to ride a specific size of side-by-side to their age, and they're required to wear a helmet. So like I said, it's the same thing as a motorcycle, and you know, I would greatly request that you guys approve this for us that do live in the county and do enjoy riding our side-by-sides. Thank you.
Thank you. I do also want to comment in this ATV ordinance, this is only for county paved roads and not not anything within a municipality area. And it will, you have to follow all New Mexico state laws. The ATVs will have mufflers, etc., is what's stated in the packet. Any further public comment? I'll go ahead. Mr. Gutierrez, if you don't mind, I'll get the gentleman behind you.
Thank you.
Robert Johnson. Kind of follow up on Mr. Pies, what he stated. For the side-by-sides, it's a select few that would be allowed. Like you said, not only that, you have to have insurance, registered blinkers, you even have to have a horn. So it's a select few, and it's usually the few that are hardworking, that are responsible, and I and I do fall into that class now, thank God. But it's something that my wife and I enjoy. You know, in the evenings, we go out and go for a ride. And you know, there's not, there's not a whole lot to do in this area, but that's that's the one thing that we really enjoy doing, so we hope to have an open mind and consider this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
Hello, my name is Julian Gutierrez. I personally don't own an ATV. I'm a little too poor for that, but I have a son, so I have a lot of friends that do. And I know that all my friends are licensed, have a valid license. My son has registered his, has insurance, has followed all the rules. He does use it to throw trash. I live a mile from him, so he uses it to bring my grandson over, and you know, they ride the county roads and stuff. But again, it goes back to that, that we got bad drivers already. So, I mean, there's there's bad drivers in cars, trucks, motorcycles, and everything. And yeah, you're going to have a few abusing this, but I hope you put that all aside, because it goes back to that. As long as we're following the rules, yeah, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with it. Majority of them, like I said, they go throw their trashes, they go visit friends, I live close by. My son did, my son's wife did get a citation from the Game and Fish, but he was following all the rules. My grandson had his helmet, they had their seat belts on. He wasn't speeding. He was literally just stopped because he was driving it on the roads. So to me, it's like if you look at the police, I wish the sheriff would, you know, you see how many uninsured vehicle drivers there is. I mean, they're already out there, you know. So to me, it's, and I know the police department and everything, they already have a lot to deal with with just regular vehicles, and now we're trying to throw in ATVs at them too, but I think majority of the people that have ATVs now are responsible. Drivers out there, they're following the rules, they're wearing their helmets, their seat belts, making sure their vehicles are maintained. And the other thing is, around here, we really don't, that I know of, we don't have trails for these things. We got to go to Red River or Taos or somewhere further where we just want to, they want to enjoy them, you know. So I would ask that you consider, you know, allowing these things in the county, just for that, just go throw your trash, go visit friends, and you know, and yeah, you know, we have to be responsible drivers when we're out there, so. But just take into consideration that we're not adding I don't think we're adding more bad drivers because they're already out there. The uninsured, the unregistered, the no licenses, so you know, it's just something I just wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Anyone further on the ATV ordinance?
Good day. My name is John Hester from here in Rattone. I just want to kind of follow up. So far, everybody has said a lot of great stuff. I totally agree with Mr. Gutierrez. He makes a very valid point. On, we've already have a lot of people breaking the law on everything else. I've had people come in, I am the owner of Hester's Motorsports here in Rattone. And a lot of people think that I'm the one doing this. I'm not. This is a state deal now coming to the county, so I didn't start this. I just want to make sure that everybody knows that. But I completely support it. And a lot of people have posted on my page and everything, that I'm doing it for the money. Trust me, it's there's not money involved in this. So first and foremost, I just want to kind of follow up with Mr. Pies, Mr. Gutierrez. They're completely legitimate in what they're saying. We already have a tremendous amount of people that do not follow the law in every aspect of life. I have people that have complained to me, what kind of guarantee can you give us that this will stop people from breaking the law, kids running through stop signs? You can't. What kind of guarantee can the police give me that there'll never be crime in this town ever again? You can't. It's impossible. But by making it a law, giving them the guidelines to follow driving on designated roads, designated streets, following the obeyed laws, children under 18, helmets and eye protection, valid driver's license, like they said, you know. Right now, every side-by-side made is for ages 16 and older. You have a valid driver's license, you should be able to drive. Now, with that said, the way the law is already stated and stated in Mexico is very, very great. And it's very difficult for people like me in my business to try to explain what this law says, and we need some clarification more so in our area. But the law basically states certain municipalities have to adopt the law in order to be able to drive on designated streets. And of course, that's the key words, designated roads and streets. Here with the county commission, we're looking for the outlining county roads, everything like that. We have a tremendous amount of ranchers and farmers that have been hassled by, honestly, I hear very, very rare stories of sheriff and state police or even in-town city police. It really is the Department of Game and Fish. Now, I'm not pointing fingers at any specific people or anything. That is just what they do. That's their jurisdiction in off-highway vehicles. So what's wrong with a rancher going to throw in his trash? Or Mr. Gutierrez, Mr. Pies, going to throw in their trash? They're outside the city limits on roads. It's not hurting anybody. And like they also said, there really is, you know, no trails. We're hoping to develop something with the city of Trinidad down the road and the the park that's going up there in the future, which might overflow to Raton and greatly benefit Raton as well. Um this is a multi-multi-billion dollar industry, the off-highway vehicle industry. It brings a tremendous amount of tax revenue to the state of New Mexico. Um and that's, that's definitely one thing that could also help and benefit. I don't look, this is a small town.
Mr. Hester, uh sorry, if you just wrap it up real quick.
I will, I will. I apologize. I get rambling. So in short, I am definitely for this. I will hope that we can uh pass this and get this taken care of. I would love to be able to see our customers, not just our customers, our friends and community members to be able to drive legally, safely on the streets of the county.
Thank you. Mr. Walton.
Hi, Warren Walton, resident. I first want to apologize for my cell phone. I always thought that turning the volume down would make it not ring. Apparently, that doesn't work. Uh so anyway, apologies. Um there's one thing that uh that's not been mentioned here tonight, and that's that we have a tremendous amount of hunters that come into this community during this season from uh from this month all the way to the end of January. Many of them come from uh outlying areas. They're hauling large trailers with uh UTVs and ATVs on them, and they only get them off to uh either do their hunt or retrieve their animal. Uh you never see them around town, and there are thousands of these vehicles that come through this this area. We're missing an opportunity. Uh we 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 uh say that we're an outdoor community. We say that we we cater to the hunters and and the people that get out on the trails and and do the fishing and and hunting. But we're missing this opportunity. All these folks coming through with these ATVs and UHVs need to get those off those trailers and start using them in this area. They'll be buying gas, they'll be buying uh going to restaurants. Uh again, as Mr. Hester and the other individuals said, um they would be only allowed on the designated roads that uh that you would designate. Um but it's an opportunity to uh make uh some grocery receipts that we're missing. Um I understand, I I did talk with the sheriff before this. I asked his opinion on this and and you know, he's right. We do have a lot of, uh you know, everybody knows where I live out on the on the county road on on up by the high school. We get a lot of folks tearing up and down that road. Um but we've always had them. And um we're always going to have that. So um you know, we just need uh enforcement on that. But if you pass this, it does allow the older individuals to take their trash. It does allow Texans and Oklahomans and people who come from other areas to get those vehicles off those trailers and use them in our area, drop a little cash in our area. And uh we can uh reap some grocery receipts from that. I hope you pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Mr. Sandoval?
Uh yes, just real quick on that also, um just to keep in mind that um our eight fire departments also utilize UTVs and ATVs. Um in most aspects, we put them on a trailer, take them to our um scene. Um but in a lot of the local fires, instead of taking the time to load them on trailers, get them to where we need when it's just a five-minute drive out, um it would be nice to just jump in our ATVs or our U- UTVs and also head on out that way. Um there's never an exception made for emergency vehicles. They're just um we have to follow the same laws just as everybody else. So um that would just extend out to the fire departments as well that we can run our ATVs out to fire scenes. Typically going out when our lights and sirens are going, um law enforcement's not gonna say nothing, but on the way back or if we're running maintenance calls and stuff, then um there was one instance where we were stopped in our UTV. Um it was, you guys are fine, go back to work, but you know, it's it's out there and passing this would also aid some of the departments as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval.
Buenos dias, I'm Roger Rayel at Twenty Mexico, four thirty-two East Wexel Avenue. Good to see everybody here this morning. Um I can't believe we're gonna actually have this discussion about ATVs and these type of vehicles. Um there are other uh chemicals that we need to address before even considering this. The golden hour, I'm not sure if anybody knows what the golden hour, any paramedics knows what the golden hour is. You have exactly one hour from the moment of impact to get yourself to a hospital, get treated. For trauma cases involving ATVs, motor vehicles, motorcycles, we don't have that hour. We have less than that hour. From what I've been told by the New Mexico Health Department is that in the rural community, that can go down to as much as fifteen minutes. And that includes the three minutes it takes for dispatch to get the first responders out there. Now, we're talking about having kids, four-wheelers and things like that. We in this community have already seen what happens when you give too much to the citizens as far as uh recreation. We have uh issues with dri- drinking, kids, stuff like that. You know, we're talking, oh, let's let's bring this money to the community. But before you bring that money to the community, we need to talk about investing in the safety first. We're overlooking the first thing, the fundamental thing is safety. And we're overlooking that. We're looking, oh, dollars, dollars. We're just expecting big Texans, big money to come in here to save us. No. We need to save ourselves from bad choices that our leaders make, okay? This time is, at at this day and age right now, it's a very popular thing. You go out there, you see what these guys are doing. Go look at our city streets right now, all the donuts and burnouts and things like that. You can't even control that now. It's already lawless. And you're gonna add more fuel to the fire? That's ridiculous. I don't know, as administrators, I don't think anybody's done their diligence on this subject. And I believe a lot of that has to do with some of our county manager not doing his job. You know, and if anybody has anything to question about that, I do, because Monty, these are college transcripts. CSU Pueblo, University of Colorado, Denver, that's a master's degree. Where are your transcripts?
Mr. Ray.
Where are they at? You don't have, because you don't have the, sir, no, I have the right to speak.
I'm calling the order.
Bad decision.
Calling on.
And this is another bad decision you're making.
Call the order, Mr. Rayel, please. Thank you.
No, I'm not gonna step down. I have a right to speak.
We will go to recess. It was three minutes. Your time is up. We will recess for five.
Is there any further public comment on the ATV ordinance, Mr. Gutierrez?
I, I, I asked that.
You had your three minutes on the ATV ordinance.
Oh, it was not three minutes. That was just three minutes.
Madam Clerk?
It's three minutes.
Those three minutes. Mr. Gutierrez, please.
Yes, sir, on behalf of Mike Pius, he, uh, he had to leave, but, uh, he asked me to come here and ask to clarify something. Are we talking about ATVs or UTVs? Because are they categorized in the same, oh, they're, they're different entities, aren't they? Or are they categorized as the same? Because, you know, he was talking about four-wheelers and, uh, I mean, uh, you know, and stuff like that, three-wheelers, smoke pits or whatever. So is this ATV or, or is the UTV considered the same? It's what Mike Pius wanted to know.
County Attorney, do you have the ordinance? Can you attest to this?
Yes, sir. Chairman Trio and Commissioners, I believe that, you know, uh, when you look at that, uh, definition under section sixty-six, sixty-six dash three dash, uh, one thousand, one point one, uh, I think, uh, the definition seems to be the two-folded. Uh, I think, uh, the all-terrain vehicle means ATV and then recreational off-highway vehicle, that means ROHB. So those are the, uh, subject to, uh, this ordinance, uh, jurisdiction and then definition. So it's, you know, the, the bottom line is that the both, the, this ordinance include ATV and ROHB.
Okay. He, he just wanted to see how that was, um, how they were defined in the law anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. All right. We'll move on to the Commission Commissioner. Any comment?
Just one brief one, and then I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say, but I think there may be some misconception about what this will actually allow. Um, if the way it's presented, this will allow for the usage only on paved county roads. Let's be very clear on that. And most of our roads are state roads, city roads. None of these vehicles are legal on state roads. Whether we like that or not, they're not. So this will include only paved county roads. And there are very few of those, as we well know, and it's basically only in the subdivisions east of town. So I just want to make that very clear.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Ware.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Your mic.
I think I asked this question of the sheriff previously, but, uh, do we subscribe to the uniform traffic code? Okay. That's my question because, um, for example, the village of Angel Fire does subscribe to the uniform traffic code. And, um, the uniform traffic code allows the use of these vehicles, uh, outside of paved roads in the village. So, um, you know, if they're licensed and all the things that, uh, Mr. Gutierrez and others talked about insurance and so on, uh, they are allowed to drive on non-paved roads as per the uniform traffic code. Uh, so, um, you know, it, to me, the uniform traffic code allows them to go on to, uh, non-paved roads. I think we ought to consider even allowing them on non-paved roads. Actually, I think it makes more sense to allow them on non-paved roads.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. I would, I would tend to agree with your statement there. The paved roads are minimal. Uh, so I, I'd agree countywide, just county roads even including dirt. Um, Commissioner Kern? Make comment?
No comment.
No comment? So I, I propose to amend this ordinance to include all county roads. Approve it for publication. Commissioner, anything further? So I'll entertain that motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, I would like to make a motion to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-four dash oh six with an amendment to include all county roads.
Okay, I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
I, I'd like to hear if the sheriff has anything to say or any comments? If he does, I don't know. He may not.
I'm listening to all the discussion. I mean, I, I definitely have concerns on both sides. I see where it's a benefit to the community, but I also have concerns about our response times and getting to these things. And also, and I've had some calls at my office about whether this is going to include golf carts riding to the golf course, different things like that. So I think that's going to increase call volume for law enforcement. With that, I mean, we're pretty short-staffed as it is. Um, so, you know, I mean, I, it's, it's a double-edged sword, no matter how you look at this, but I, I am concerned about the safety concerns and how fast we can get EMTs and people to a scene if something were to happen, especially with, um, the construction we have in the area, uh, ranch truck going down the road and you have an ATV that you can't see coming out of a clearing. Uh, which are those, I, we can, what if things to death, I understand that. Those are, those are safety concerns I have. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Kern. Sorry, I have a motion and a second.
Mr. Ware?
No.
Mr. Ware?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item number twenty-six, discussion action approval, the notice of intent to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh five, amending Colfax County Ordinance number twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash oh two subdivision of land for publication. Commissioners, this is something I bring before you on behalf of my constituents. They would like to see, they're having issues within the subdivisions of the county regarding junk cars. And I would like to, uh, just bring this in front of you for discussion and, and review. Pretty much what this ordinance states is if a person intends to have a junk vehicle, and it goes into detail on the requirements of this vehicle, and it asks that it be fenced off or or housed in a shed, a garage, or a barn, or some kind of, uh, facility. So with that, I'll, uh, take public comment on the, uh, ordinance. Any public comment at this time? Please come up. Mr. Pafford.
Yes, Commissioner, my name's Joel Pafford. I'm a resident. I live in the subdivision just east of town. Uh, I'm here in favor of this ordinance. Uh, it has, uh, to a big point, destroyed, not destroyed, but reduced the price of my property, and I have to look at it every night. So I just want to say I, I would appreciate you all adopting this and, uh, going with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Brenda Bingham. Um, we live next to Joel and, and the property he's talking about is right next to ours. And it's, it's not even a, um, it's eyesore and it's depreciating our property and stuff. But, um, we've lived here for a couple of years. We moved here because it, it was a beautiful subdivision, um, and it was cleaned up where we were. Um, I'm a two-year, two years in remission from cancer, and I'm kind of concerned about health hazards and, um, you know, with the vehicles and, and them working on it and not knowing if they're dumping oils and stuff like that that could get into our water. So it's just also a health hazard concern for our subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Michael Bingham. And, um, my concern is, is, yes, it devalues our property. We have to look at it, but it's also an invitation to animals and critters that are not wanted in that subdivision, um, also. I, uh, I feel it's an eyesore. We can't really enjoy the view out there without seeing all the junk laying around. Um, I would appreciate, uh, you, uh, looking into this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, good morning, Chairman Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Um, so I, I've also looked at this, and since this is, um, directed at my office enforcing, I do have some concerns with all the ordinances written. Uh, some of what's in this ordinance gives for a thirty-day notice to the property owner, uh, and then thereby then we go back and remove property off of somebody's property. Um, that's a violation of their Fourteenth Amendment right to due process. Typically, in my experience from working at the municipality, it's a notice to abate, followed by if someone's into court where then a judge determines if this is junk, if it should be removed, should they be fined, or they allotted more time to, um, remedy the situation, whatever that might be. And then we go back with a court order to remove property. Um, I've also checked with, uh, Jody's wrecker service, uh, who is one of our vendors that would tow vehicles, towing things off of private property, he said he would not do. Um, I don't know what JM Tire would do. I haven't had a chance to speak with him. Um, so then that would, um, cause us a situation to then does the county get involved with storing, uh, towing and storing of those vehicles, which is a huge expense to the county, um, and then trying to get those vehicles processed to be able to auction for scrap or whatever. So I see some issue with that. Reading through the process that they are, uh, is discussed about appeal process by that property owner, it refers to the older ordinance in Article Nine, which talks specifically about subdivision plots and that decision being made by either a committee, the council, or the county manager, none of which are a judge. Um, so I think if, if we're going to do this, I think this needs to be something separate from a subdivision revision and go specifically with the junk ordinance if that's what we're.
Thank you. County Attorney, did you want to speak to any of that?
Yes, sir. Chairman Trio and Commissioners, I don't understand, you know, the sheriff's concern at this time, but, uh, it just seems to be that, uh, we are not going to remove, uh, unless we, uh, the, uh, parties, you know, claim in this matter can go through the process, meaning that, uh, we will provide a written notice required by the statute, uh, you know, the empower by the, you know, county under section forty-seven dash six dash, uh, six dash nine, and then we provide a process, due process, you know, appeal to the county commission, whether or not the, this, uh, written decision should be, uh, standing or not. So therefore, I believe that we provide a due process right, uh, provide, uh, given to the, the, the owner, uh, who has been notified on that matter too, sir. And then, uh, I believe that the municipality and county, they have enforcement, uh, uh, power given by the new Mexico statute, such as, uh, you know, uh, such as, uh, deteriorated, uh, real property. If that's the case, we provide, you know, the notice to the, uh, property owner, and then if property owner doesn't rectify this within certain days provided by the, uh, the governing body, they have a right to appeal that matter to the governing body. If that does not been corrected, if that's the case, uh, they, you know, the city or, uh, the county can enforce the resolution or, uh, you know, this ordinance and then, uh, to remove the property from, uh, from that condition and then file to the state district court, uh, to, for the, uh, injunction action or any type of the enforcement action to recover, uh, uh, fees associated with that, you know, removal. So I believe that the, the reason that we refer this matter to the Article Ten, Article Nine, is making sure that under subdivision statute, we provide the same remedy allowed by the, uh, you know, the citizens, uh, that making sure that they can provide a process. There should be, uh, there, I mean, in, I've never seen any type of the court order should can involve in this matter, sir. If that's the case, uh, you know, that we don't have any, uh, the type of the enforcement, uh, mechanism allowed by statute under forty-seven dash six dash nine. If there is anything kind of unconstitutional, unconstitutional matter should be, uh, you know, the, uh, bestowed. If that's the case, you know, the, any citizen can file the, you know, declaratory judgment action, uh, through the, uh, district court. But, you know, the, this is, uh, this is, you know, the, we provide all the notice and then hearing requirement under subdivision act, which provided fully, and then we incorporated that mechanism and we added only, only one portion of the junk vehicle prohibition. And then, uh, if they have, uh, you know, uh, issues and they can bring up to the county commission and we, county commission can hear and decide whether or not the written notice for the removal should be standing, sir. And then, uh, any party agreed by this matter under rules seventy-four, seventy-five, they can file this matter to the district court, sir. I think, I hope that this answered the question.
Thank you, County Attorney. County Sheriff. Commissioners?
No questions at this time?
Commissioner Ware?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I would just say, uh, what, um, Attorney Roe is saying makes sense to me because municipalities do have the ability to enforce, uh, code that is similar to this, uh, to the point of, uh, forcing people to remove, uh, items from their property. And, uh, there is a legal pathway. And like you said, if it goes to the municipality and the council approves it or the commission approves it, uh, there is a path through the court system that they can pursue. Uh, so, um, I, I also do believe, I mean, my, I have several constituents that have been begging for this, uh, type of ordinance uh, for a while because, um, uh, it's, it's not the person that may have a vehicle that's broken down for a long time that they're worried about, but we have several property owners that really abuse this. And, uh, I mean, we have one in the valley that I don't know how many, but I would guess on probably five or six acres of land, they probably have thirty vehicles that are broken down. Uh, not to mention, uh, well, anyhow, uh, so I'm, I am in, uh, full favor of this based on, uh, the feedback I've received so far from my constituents. I think there's very few people that are abusing it and will be affected, uh, by this. But, um, I, I do think we need to do something about it. Tourism is such a big part of our economy. And when people come here and they see properties that are just junked out, it is a negative. Uh, it is viewed negatively. And, um, it, uh, not to mention the fact of the property values that were mentioned by, uh, the people who spoke, the citizens that spoke. Uh, that's another big aspect of our economy is, um, the value of real estate directly affects the budget situation here at the county, uh, which we all know we're having struggles in the budget area right now. So, um, to me, it all adds up to being in favor of such an ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. I, I stand with Commissioner Ware. Um, and like I said, it goes to my constituents. And the reason I support this too, you know, they worked hard, they built a property, they, uh, they invest their life and their soul into where they live. And, uh, you know, there's been situations where, where we've, I've tried to resolve this and just ask the people to, to strain up the property and, and it doesn't, it doesn't get done. I've asked, uh, and I keep hearing from multiple, this is not the only time, it, it happens from multiple constituents. So, uh, I am in favor of this. Is there anything further, Commissioner? Commissioner Kern?
Yeah, question. Was this modeled after another county or drafted by?
I believe this was, and County Attorney, please, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was modeled after Santa Fe County?
Yes, sir.
I, I agree with everything both of you said. I, we do have problems in, in the county in certain areas and that. I don't think it's, you know, it's a select few, uh, not the majority. Um, and it would be nice to be able to do something, um. And I guess we, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of trying to bring something forward. If this exactly, I don't know if that's exactly what we want. Um, I, I do question the enforcement of it. Um, we don't have a zoning officer or zoning enforcement officer, and it would fall on the sheriff's department as written. So, um, and we, you know, he's shorthanded as it is. So, but, um, but nonetheless, there is a problem and it should be addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner Kern. Seeing no further comment, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So move second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Ware?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, discussion action approval of expenditures. Commissioner, any questions or comments? Commissioner Kern? No questions. I do want to state to the department heads, I encourage you, well, it's not encouraged, I want you to, um, price shop your stuff, price shop. There's certain things that I'm, I've been reviewing expenses on. This last time there was tires that were purchased, very similar tires. Um, one from one vendor, one from another, six hundred dollar difference. All right. There's issues. If you're, I know this is going to sound ridiculous, but printing in color, do we need to print in color all the time? Maybe not. Maybe it's cheaper if we could go black and white. Uh, little things. Check on Amazon, uh, if you're going to be buying something. Double check and see if, uh, what's occurring or what, what the price is and just, just do your best and do your due diligence to, to help reduce costs, please. So with that, seeing no other comments from the commission, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve expenditures. So move. I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to item number nine, discussion action approval of expenditures pursuant to resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-nine. Commissioner, any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So move. Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Ware?
Mr. Ware?
Yes. Yes. Yes, yes. Moving on to item number ten, discussion action, loss or gap replacement, environmental clearance requirements, Mr. Probin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Before you today is our task order proposal to provide environmental work related to requirements put on the county for the loss or gap bridge replacement, most notably from the United States Corps of Engineers and the New Mexico Department of Transportation concerning biological survey and archaeological survey and some hydrology characterization and earthwork characterization. We had mentioned this to the commission previously. Our contract expired at the end of June. We have a new contract in place. So this is a task order to obtain these services and pursue this so we can get this project off the standstill and get it done. I stand for any questions.
So Mike, I have a question. I thought this was already in process to get completed, so we haven't even started on this?
Mr. Chairman, we, we have done some preliminary work, but the actual field work is considerable. So we thought it best to get the task order in place before it got, we got costs out of hand, if you will.
I guess my next question is, I don't know where these, where are these funds gonna be coming from?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that's a good question. I believe they are eligible under the grant money that you have from the DOT as part of the engineering.
And just something I'd also like to throw out, there wasn't there a timeframe on the easement? The easement that we have for the, the low water cross?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, yes, I believe that is the case. We were looking at towards the end of the year, so we will need to revisit that with the landowner, the, actually the trustee. We also had provided through the county a permanent easement document to Mr. Mack and never received any comment from, from him on that, so we need to pursue that to get the temporary extended until we get the new bridge in place and then permanent easement in place.
Thank you, Mr. Probin. I'd encourage you to please reach out to Mr. Mack as soon as possible to, to notify him of the delays and see if he can work with us. I want the best communication possible.
I will do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern?
No questions?
Commissioner Weir? I'm fine with approving this, that the money's coming out of the money from the DOT. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Moving on to item number eleven, discussion action of RFP twenty-two-four dash oh-two, legal services for Colfax County. Ms. Avila.
Morning Commissioners. Um, our current attorney contract expires at the end of October, I want to say October twenty-sixth. But just requesting to go out for, for a new proposal.
Thank you. I guess I, I had some questions in is, so I also sit on the school board and during our, our time with our attorneys, we just kept the fee. They say you'll be our county attorney for, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand a year or whatever, and anything that falls within this is really that's all we're paying is that set fee. I don't know if this is something that the commission wants to entertain or, or not. And also I would like to, so I was, what is, is it a three-person? Am I correct with that, an evaluation board?
Yes.
I would propose to move it to a five.
Okay.
And I would like to have a neutral party. Maybe Leonard Baca, or the sheriff, or someone he appoints, Wardensley, someone from the county manager's office, those that actually have an interaction with the county attorney to evaluate these, these bits and make the best choice for the county.
That's actually what I thought of. Um, I kinda thought about also a five-member board as well. But of course I do, yeah. County manager, somebody from else, you know, everybody that would have to deal with, obviously, legal issues. But no, we can do a, a five board.
Commission, Commissioner Kern, any comments?
No, I just, one question for you, Ms. Avila. Was there any changes in the RFP from this one from the previous one, other than the dates?
Nope, other than, yeah, just the dates.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Weir? No questions? So is there any, I'd like to hear your thoughts, Commission, on, on, because right now it shows it as it's a set fee for the year for twenty hours minimal, so I think that's twenty hours probably per month. But I don't know if there's any interest in just setting a, a fee? Or do we wanna continue with the hours?
Mr. Chairman, my only concern about setting hours is how is it gonna impact the county's ability to deal with legal issues? My concern is that that our meetings are, you know, frequently four or five hours long each. There's happy hours in a month right there. And I'm, I'm concerned it'll be an excuse to stop asking the county attorney to attend meetings. And I think it's very critical that the county attorney do attend meetings. And I, I think the proof is in the issues that arise prior to the county attorney attending meetings. I think we had a lot of problems that were very expensive problems. And a lot of our attorney fees we have now are directly related to those issues. And there are problems that could have been resolved immediately had a county attorney been in attendance at the meeting. So that's, that's my only concern with putting limits on this.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Kern?
No comment.
Well, then I'm, I'm, I'm fine with this and moving forward with a five-person review board. So I, I'd entertain a motion to approve amending it to a five-person review board.
Are you asking to pass the RFP with that amendment?
Yes.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved to second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Weir?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Moving along to item number twelve, discussion and action cancellation of RFP twenty-two-four dash oh-four, Colfax County Sugarloaf Fire Station. Ms. Avila?
We did put a memo in your packet. We did not receive any bids for that project. So we just asking permission to cancel this bid, renumber and go back out.
Thank you. Mission, any question? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Moving forward to item number thirteen, discussion action of RFP twenty-two-four dash oh-five, Colfax County Sugarloaf Fire Station. Ms. Avila?
This is just the rebid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve RFP twenty-two-four dash oh-five.
Thank you. Second, it's been moved to second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Weir?
Yes, yes.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Moving along to item number fourteen, discussion action memorandum of agreement between the NM Energy Minerals and Natural Resource Department in Colfax County. Mr. Sandoval? County manager, can you speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a memorandum agreement between the New Mexico Energy and Minerals Natural Resource Department and Colfax County. This amendment number one is made and entered by the State of New Mexico Energy and Minerals Resource Department, Colfax County, whereas the partners have previously made an agreement effective October twenty nineteen. Whereas section fourteen thereof provides the original agreement shall not be amended except by written instrument executed by the parties, and whereas the parties now agree that their mutual interest to amend the previous made agreement. And so that's kind of what we're looking at, June. Did you have an opportunity to review this as well?
So before June speaks, I'll just, I'll speak to this. The only changes that I saw is they're, they're increasing the funding and, and including some of the training that has to go with it. Are we, I guess my questions are, are we up to date on this training and is this money a one-time dollar amount or is this like a yearly amount that we get? Go ahead, county attorney.
Good morning, Chairman Trio and Commissioners. I believe that I just reviewed this documentation. This is typical government contract matter. And I believe that, you know, those allocate funds to be, I believe that, you know, there's some funding requirement over there too, sir. But I, I think that those matters should not be concerned. But I think we need to kind of make sure that we can follow on this matter, sir. I think the county manager, I just kind of make sure that we are on the same page. We are looking at the item number fourteen or fifteen, sir?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, yes, I'm looking at the same, sir. Yeah, I think those are things, you know, it has been funded on the part two, sir.
I guess for the commission, I have no issues with this contract. I'd just like an answer, county manager, if you could follow up with me later on that, those two questions.
Yes, sir, I sure will.
Commissioners, anything further? Commissioner Kern?
Mr. Chairman, do you wanna motion to postpone or don't?
Just a motion to approve.
Okay.
Because my questions are not gonna change the, yeah, the agreement. Okay, did you understand? Anything further for you, Commissioner? Seeing nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved to second, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Weir?
Yes, yes. Item number fifteen, discussion action rice program for MAT MVCD has been struck from the agenda. Moving on to item number sixteen, discussion action of RFP number twenty-two-four dash oh-six, Bartlett subdivision. Mr. Probin?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is the request to advertise for bids, the Bartlett subdivision paving project, Three Roads. And that, and that project is funded through the Mexico Department of Transportation with a match by the county. We would advertise starting, I believe, the eighteenth of this month, open bids on the twenty-ninth, if I, I've got my dates right, coordinated with Ms. Avila on. So we're requesting permission to advertise for bids.
Thank you. Commissioner, where do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, is our match gonna be financial or is it gonna be in kind?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Weir, I believe it is financial. I believe it's in, in cash. It's not, I, I could be wrong. I, I don't have the grant agreement in front of me, but I believe it is in money.
And then, Mr. Chairman, my follow-up would be, is this match budgeted?
I do not know. I think not.
Mr. Manager, I, I would request that we find out if this match was part of the grant matching funds that were budgeted.
Mr. Steven has a comment.
I do know going over budget, I did send a copy of this contract to tie the CPA for, for this project and also the loss or gap bridge.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern?
No questions?
And I just wanted to be clear, since this resides within my district, this is paving in the Bartlett subdivision. And this is South Pond Road, North Mesa Loop and South Mesa Loop. So.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't have any further questions, but I'll go ahead. Oh, I do have one question. Does this provide any paving into the fire station that's out there on South Pond Road?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, it paves the roadway in front of the fire station, does not include paving into the fire station.
Okay.
Right away.
Okay. County manager, I guess maybe, would you talk to the fire marshal and see if maybe there's some fire funds or something that could? Or if they see it even beneficial to, to, to do that? While these, while these companies are out there, if they could pave from the entrance of the fire station out? And I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve pending that this is budgeted within our fiscal year.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved to second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Weir?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I just would like to say there's an extreme shortage of asphalt in northeastern New Mexico. So don't mill any roads until you have the asphalt lined up.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, we're well taken. We are paving, these are existing base course roadways, a few of dirt roads, but we have seen that and we also are shortage a little bit for paving contractors, so there are concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, thank you both. So moving on to item number seventeen, discussion action, Colfax County ES Program, fiscal year twenty-five, Health Council Scope of Work. This is Ortiz.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, morning. So on, that's for the Health Council. Yesterday, they sent us a new contract. We're getting quite a bit more money. Last year, we got fifteen thousand, we're getting eighty, I think, I believe it's eighty-one thousand dollars this year. And, and so they sent us, they said with more money comes more paperwork. So they sent us the whole new, which is action amendment, a man memorandum of agreement. And then I have a campaign contribution disclosure form, and I'm not sure if this is to be filed on the, on the ES program or on the county. So, and it's just, it's just a form that, it's a standard form for campaign contributions. So I have the contract here. I don't know if you want it or if you want me to put it on the next agenda.
You would need to go on the next.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Or is this the one that we're reviewing today that's fifteen thousand?
No, we, we're actually getting eighty thousand.
Okay.
But, Mr. Chairman, I think she's talking about the agreement she received is not the agreement in the package.
Yeah, they sent us the whole new set of.
Okay, so, yeah, that will have to wait till our next meeting.
Okay.
Does it make sense at this, at this point to postpone these items?
I don't.
I mean, I'm not gonna vote on something. I haven't seen the contract.
No, this is really to prove this contract and what she has is a separate contract, correct?
No, that, 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 this will replace that contract.
Okay.
That actually, yeah, that's, that's the contract. This one is a memorandum.
So I would say, no, I'd say no action needs to be taken from the commission, Commissioner Kern?
And I've talked to Michael about getting that on the agenda, just in case.
Yeah, correct, no action, but the other items you're okay with? Nothing has changed on those, Mr. Weir?
No.
Okay. So just item seventeen, then it's going to be postponed?
Yes, that's the only one.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item number eighteen, discussion action of Colfax County ES Program ECECD Visiting Scope of Work Agreement number twenty-five dash zero zero dash zero 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 dash seven. Ms. Ortiz?
Okay, this is our.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, on that last one, don't, didn't we need to vote to postpone?
No, it would just, well, we would just take no action. Madam Clerk? Okay, well, we'll, we'll go and I'll entertain a motion to postpone.
So moved.
Second, all right, and that's for item number seventeen, it's been moved in second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Weir?
Yes, yes. Thank you. So going back to item number eighteen, discussion action, Colfax County ES Program ECECD Visiting Scope of Work Agreement number twenty-five dash zero zero dash zero 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 dash seven.
Okay, and this one is our home visiting grant. So with this grant, we do home visiting prenatal to age five. They, we, last year, we got two-hundred-and-ninety-two, five-hundred thousand, and they, they upped us They upped us to three hundred and twenty-two, two hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents this year. So. And they're also going by children or instead of families, we were serving sixty-five families, we're going to serve sixty, I mean ninety-two children. Which is, those are families with multiple children. So those are the changes. To, to that one.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? No, as you can see, none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to item number nineteen, discussion action Colfax County ES Program Home Visitor Fiscal Year Twenty-Five. Service Agreement for Alejandra Sanchez.
Okay, and nothing has changed, but the salary and the salary is due to the change because we got more money. And I based them to a little bit off of this. Scale that we were given at the. Our annual meeting. So there's just, just an increase in, in the funding and that would be on all of them, nothing else has changed, has changed from last year.
Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, go ahead. The dates are wrong on the contract, but I don't have any issues with it, so I will.
Where at?
It says July on the first page, so it's actually August, unless it's going to be retro.
Enrique.
Yeah, it is going to be retro.
Can we retroify this? Go back and paper services that have already.
Probably not.
I can change it to August if you need me to.
Yes.
Yes.
So seeing that, re-entertaining a motion to approve with as amended?
Motion to approve as amended or corrected, yes.
It gives her a second.
No, second.
Madam Clerk.
Mister Cur.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Yes. Let's cut, so we'll move on to item number twenty, discussion action Colfax County ES Program. Lead Home Visitor slash Family Lead Support Practitioner slash Home Visitor slash Location Lactation. Consultant for fiscal year twenty. Twenty-five service agreement extension for Kristen Trillo.
Okay, the subcontractor, is that the one?
Yes, no, this is for Kristen Trillo.
Excuse me?
This is for Kristen Trillo.
Okay, yeah, same thing with hers, hers, nothing is different except for the.
Except for the date.
The, the salary and the date, yes, I'll change that too.
Commissioners, anything further? Seeing nothing further, we'll approve as amended.
So move.
Second, it's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Mister Cur.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes, yes. Moving on to item number twenty-one, discussion action Colfax County ES Program Home Visitor slash Health Council Co-Coordinator. Fiscal year twenty-five service agreement extension, this is for Ashley Medina.
And yes, that's, everything's the same except for the salary also.
Commissioner, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the amended.
So move.
Second, thank you, it's been moved in a second, but.
Mister Cur.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to item number twenty-two, discussion action Colfax County ES Program Director Fiscal Year Twenty-five Service Agreement. Extension Debbie Ortiz.
Same thing, nothing's changed but the salary.
Commissioners, any questions? Sheriff Kern.
Um, move to approve.
Well, I'm just asking for questions.
No, no questions, sorry.
Questions? So Mister Ortiz, I do have a question, why, why are these coming to us late?
Well, because we hadn't gotten our, actually, we hadn't gotten our award letters from. Either, from either grant, we just got them. Well, right before I put them on the agenda.
Okay.
So at the, yeah, the end, I believe it was the end of July that they sent them to us, they had sent us. ECE CD had sent us. A la, award letter, but they actually had to go back and redo everybody's in the whole state because they added. Added wrong and they're, they're paying us by curriculum now.
Okay.
So there were, there were mistakes in the contract, so they had to recall all of them and.
And then I, I did have one question for you, is the budget in for the, the yes program?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I was also going to ask you, how come you didn't attend our last, the department head meeting that we requested you be here?
The department head meeting?
Or, yes, for quarterly updates from the yes program.
Okay, when was that?
I'm not sure on the exact date. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mister Chairman, I had sent out a notice for everybody to attend the following day. And. Miss Ortiz overslept, I believe, that day and didn't make it.
I don't think I overslept, I don't.
Uh, you, I had sent you an email and I had sent other people emails that they. That individuals needed to be here for the commission meeting, for the department. Reviews and to advise the commission kind of where we were. I think, as I recall, I got an email from you the following day apologizing. Saying you had, had kind of overslept, at least that's best of my recollection.
Okay, yeah. I don't recall saying that I had overslept, I, I possibly might not have been feeling well, but.
Well, if you would, just please attend when we requested or.
Okay.
Representative.
Yeah, and I think I had actually not seen it until the next day. It was sent out the day before and I didn't see it until it was too late, that's what I believed the, the problem was.
Commissioner, anything further? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Recommended motion to.
Move, I move to approve as amended.
As, as amended.
Oh, second.
Yeah.
Mister Cur.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And then on the subcontractor, that's exactly the same as last year.
So moving on to item number twenty-three, discussion action ES Program Early Childhood Education. And Care Department Home Visiting Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Program Subcontract Agreement. Critical Consultants Service Agreement Execution for Personal Services Between Colfax County ES and Yuleberry Consulting LLC.
Exactly the same as last year. Nothing changed.
We need to amend any dates?
See.
Yes.
I'm sure, prob, yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved to second, Madam Clerk.
Mister Cur.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, would you like me to put today's date in? Today's date on all of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to item number twenty-four, discussion action resolution twenty-two, twenty-four dash thirty-one, a resolution ratifying resolution. Number twenty, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-eight, a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five. Fiscal year. Budget adjustments, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine. A resolution adopting the final budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five. And resolution twenty, twenty twenty-four dash thirty. Twenty twenty-four, final quarter financial report year end, June twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Commissions, is there any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
I'll go ahead and second, Madam Clerk.
Mister Cur.
Yes.
Mister Webb.
Yes, yes. Item number twenty-five has been struck from the agenda, but at this time, we'll go ahead and take a ten-minute recess and reconvene at eleven oh five.
Yeah, I'll. Yes, I said, did you give my email? And I said, yeah, I said, no. When I came in, as I came in the middle after me and I'm sorry, said, did you see my email that I had wanted to say? I said, yeah, I saw it. So I have my reason to run, but for Bryce. Bad one.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Moving on to item number twenty-eight, discussion action. Treasurers new office and equipment. So commission, I asked that this come just before you, there is desks are removed. And the treasurer's office probably looking for new equipment to possibly put in there. So I did want to bring this to, uh, to your attention and see if there's funding available for this equipment. Uh, Madam Treasure.
Good morning, commissioners. Um. I called, uh, Albuquerque Office Solutions regarding, um. Being that the clerk's office came in and ripped out one of the cubicles. They took out a desk and I'm not sure what, what else. I never took pictures. Um. Uh, he just said the system is outdated. And it can't just be work because I asked him, can you come and put new panels? He said, no, that was long ago. He said he was here for, um, the glass, the, the glass that we all have in, you know, during COVID. And I'm just, uh. Just disappointed and sad on how this county is going. The elected officials not helping during challenging times with the budget. Um, I personally feel like it was being vindictive towards me. I wasn't wanting to move in the clerk's office. It was Alfonso and the girls for safety reasons. You know, they, uh, there was more storage place to keep money. Um, if we needed to have a conference call instead of leaving the county or coming to one of these offices. There was a room in the back that could be done. Um. I thought the clerk being, I, I've always thought, because I've been here thirty-four years that. The furniture, she got new furniture, she got new bulletproof glass carpet desks. That that furniture. Is the county's, just like mine. The treasurer's office, when we move, we can't take that apart to. You know, make it dysfunctional for whoever comes in that office. Everything stays. I mean, we might need a few filing cabinets. And, um. Things like that. It was moving ready, even though it was outdated or older, it was still functional for us. And again, I wasn't the one wanting to move the, um. Our goal was to be in back by tap season. That's not going to happen. And I was doing this just to help, um, my staff and the new, um, treasure. And unfortunately, and I was probably glad I had left that evening. I went home around four to, because I hadn't eaten. And, uh, my staff, I was babysitting my granddaughter that week, so my staff witnessed, um. Two of her employees taking, um, furniture out. And they didn't call me till it was kind of late. Um, and I just, I mean, I, I didn't think, I didn't think Rayetta would do that. Ray, I've known you to be a good person. You've helped me in times when I was sick. I, there's a protocol. And then on June thirtieth, my chief deputy went into the clerk's office and talked with Rayetta. And she told him that Mary Lou, Commissioner Kern said, uh, she told Commissioner. Commissioner Kern what she was taking and she said, okay. But that can't be done. That has to be done in a meeting. And Monty had already given, um. Had already told her to bring back the furniture. And that needed to be done. We can't just take. You know, that has to be moved out from inventory. And everything has to be accounted for, and now nothing's, nothing's accounted for. It's making this just like a hostile work environment. This has been going on for a couple of years. And I don't come to meetings because of it. If the negative energy is too hard. And more and more, I'm thankful I'm retiring in December. Um, because this isn't the way I'm used to the county working. There's protocol to get rid of furniture. And even though. When I leave my office, that furniture is no longer mine. We will take what we need when we need it. Had she taken it when she first moved in there, then that would have been fine. Or we get her desks. I don't know. I just feel, I'm just saddened that we don't have money. And we're doing this petty stuff that doesn't, it needs to stop. We all need to get along. We've gotten along before. And the county, the way the county is going in this direction, it's not good. It'll delay our move till January, when Alfonso goes in. And we have other things to do. I didn't get to go to conference. I'm trying to get the new credit card system. But this kind of stuff doesn't let me do my job because we're having to. To come up with stuff and then one of the ladies in my office went into the office and. A couple of the girls cursed and it's just something we don't need to have. We all need to get along like professionals and act professional. And this is all, I hope, I hope, uh. This county, we can survive and work together and quit trying to. Let people do their jobs. She's here to do the minutes. I'm here to do taxes. Let Monty run his office, let the clerk, the assessor run her office. Let the maintenance run their office. And let's try to get along.
Thank you.
And I don't have a price code. He has to come down to give us a price code. I know we're not going to try to go, because I asked, can you move a few panels? Maybe to put a desk in and he just said he'd have to come and look at it. But my office knows they're not getting in before texting. But we will be trying to do a credit card system. So everybody's, if they're. Hopefully they're on, they're on board to, and don't, we don't have opposition on trying to, to do the, uh. Uh, sure. The training on it.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can't give you a price until we visit with them.
Any timeframe on that?
No, he just, uh.
So I would, I would like to bring that in front of the commission to make sure that office is functional.
Right, yeah. It would be, yeah, it would be nice. I guess it'll give maintenance time to, to clean it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Trish Hill, I would like to answer up to some of that stuff. As far as the bulletproof glass, we do not have glass in our office. We have not received it. I did, I did apply for a grant and I got funding for that. My desks, uh, you can ask the staff. We tried any which way we could to try and get the stuff that was in there to fit in our office. So we wouldn't have to spend any money. As far as our tables, we needed the ta, we need the tables to be able to put our equipment on so that we can use. Everything was not moved out of that office due to the fact that we were trying to run an election. And now that we've had to start moving this stuff, we've had, had to move it all on our own. We had help from the road department one day to move the heavy, um, filing cabinets. As far as our desks and stuff, we have requested assistance. And we have been told that manager Gorge stated that they can't help us. I did visit with manager Gore one day to ask him to assist us to get our Platts cabinet, our plaque cabinet out. Sarah and I were both in the office with you when we asked you if we could use the, um, Tommy lift. To help us get those plaque cabinets out there that have plots in, and you said you would work with us. I know, um, Chairman Trish Hill, you were in the office. There was nothing ripped out and you can ask these two ladies here. They did not rip anything out. Um. When we, uh, were. They've been in the office. They can speak on the hostility that they have received. Uh, we were not told that we could not be in that office until we were escorted in by the treasurer's office. Um, we've had to go in and try and get documents. Uh, they've changed the locks on us. We've tried to go in. Uh, Lydia, I believe it was last week, we tried to get into the office and you and Alfonso were out. They told us nobody had the combination for us to get in to get to our plots.
Right, and I gave it to him after, and there was a cubicle ripped out. There, I have a picture of it.
It's not, it's not ripped out. We were going to use that cubicle in the back, uh, so that they wouldn't have to use their heavy books. Um, we have since, uh, moved, um, Judge Quinn's files over there. So we do have the cubicle desk and we are willing to give it back to you. Just like when I talked to Chairman Trish Hill, we did take out the, um, the drawers. Because we needed the drawers for our aperture cards. They've gone in and they've consolidated from probably about six cabinets, which are, it was three front and back. They've consolidated into one and we do have, um, some more of the drawers and we do have the, the wider drawers that we were going to.
The cubicle was still taken out. It was, it's empty.
Right, and it is empty. We were going to use that table, but you know.
But you can't tear you cubicles apart like that. That's why the guy told me today, those are made for that specific office. Well, Alfonso even thought, well, we'll bring ours in. It, no, yours are purple and gray. We have beige. And you can't tear those apart. It's not right.
But can, you know what, uh, would you ladies like to speak, but please come up to the mic so that they can speak on behalf of, of what was removed? But I would like to finish if at all possible, uh, speaking.
Yes, go ahead. And, but I do want to clarify that you did confirm to me that one of those desks was broken.
Well, it, what it is, is it's, it's the leg that, and it can be glued back on. And it's just the, the leg that holds the desk up. So it's not broken that it's out of commission. We just have to glue the leg back on.
Okay.
And we've probably glued it before.
I will, I will allow you to finish, Madam Clerk, and ladies, you could speak, but if this has anything to do with the personnel matter, do not bring this up. This is not personnel.
No, no, it's not. It's just, they're just discussing on the pulling of the stuff out.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. And as far as the other equipment, our computers and stuff, that's stuff that we need to run our day-to-day business with.
Right, and I, I'm not, the only thing I was concerned about was the cubicle. And moving ready to go in.
And it's, it's ready to go. It, we've got it there and we can, we can bring it back and they can show you how it was taken out.
Yeah, but it, this shouldn't have happened.
It shouldn't have. You guys should have sat down and you guys should have talked about it. You should have went to her when we first addressed you. You needed to talk to her and you told us no.
No, the, um, the county manager had already given her direction. I can't.
Well, there's no communication.
Order, order, order.
Just. But all we did take out, we did take out the desk that was in that cubicle. It was not destroyed. Nothing was destroyed. We did take it out and we did have help taking that out because we are just. We are a group of women in there that do need help lifting stuff. We cannot do it on our own. Sometimes our maintenance can't help us. And that's the reason why we had help getting in there and getting the cubicles out there correctly. We did not destroy them.
Should, should have never happened. Bottom line, it shouldn't have happened.
Can I say something on the hostile environment, though? You're talking about hostile environment, but you're telling your workers not to come talk to me. That's hostile environment.
No.
Okay, guys, that's, that's okay. We're just, but like I said, we will give you that cubicle back. They can, if, if they're allowed, they can show you how it was pulled out and they'll put it back in. As far as the drawers, you can have the drawers, but we do need some of that stuff for our stuff as well. For filing of our stuff in our office.
Yeah, all, what you took, uh, the thing that disturbed me was the cubicle. You know, we were ready to get in there. We could have gotten some, it just didn't need to happen, Rayetta.
Well, Lydia, it's not, I'm not going to argue with you.
Protocol.
Yeah, but you, you guys could have just addressed it and been like, hey.
Okay, guys.
All right, we're done. Thank you very much.
Everybody's not letting the.
Thank you, Madam Treasure.
Do what he's supposed to do.
County Manager.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So this situation occurred on July the twenty-ninth. And I know when I was, uh, leaving at about five-thirty, um, and that was, uh, the back, uh. Uh, exit where my car is parked. Um, I did observe a green, um, Ford Ranger. Uh, there were two individuals in there wearing, um. Raton Water Department shirts. I'm not going to mention their names at this time. But I did, uh, identify who they were. And I was told at that time that they were picking up furniture. And delivering it across the alley, uh, to the, uh, county clerk's office. I later did get statements from, uh, the city of Raton. Which also stated that they were picking up items from. The old clerk's office and delivering it across the alley, uh, to the new clerk's office. Almandale, would you like to start the video at this time? Okay. So this is going to be a timeline. And it's going to show furniture being removed. It's also going to show that the furniture was not taken across the alley to the new clerk's office. Did you see the green Ford Ranger arriving? And there you see the green Ford Ranger departing. At four-twenty-seven PM. Returned trip one, four-thirty-nine. Departed again at five-oh-three. Returned at fifteen-twenty-one. Almandale, on the, uh, original video, it also showed the green Ford Ranger making a right out on Savage. Do you recall that? Trip number three, five-thirty-three PM, and we see the green Ford Ranger leaving. If we can just back up a moment. Do you have any video that shows, uh, that on every trip? The green Ford Ranger actually made a right turn on Savage? Okay. Okay. But essentially you can verify that on all three trips. Along with the time, the pickup arrived and then made a right turn on Savage.
That is correct.
Okay. The, uh, here is video of some of the items being taken out of the old clerk's office. Or actually, I guess these are stills. Chairs. More chairs. More desk. Do you just hold it right there? So we do have information and we do have video footage that these items were picked up in three different loads. They went to the end of the alley, turned right. The manager's office believes these items were taken somewhere to the vicinity of, um, the Longfellow School. Um, went down under the overpass, turned on Martinez Street. And, uh. It would appear, uh, that these items were dropped off. Which, um. Clearly shows that these items were not taken across the alley to the clerk's office. These items were taken to an unknown location. If you go ahead and go with the last, um. Still. Or the one before that, uh, the pickup. Silver pickup trailer and, uh, vehicle arriving at the new clerk's office. During this time, I was getting messages, phone calls. Um, I talked to. To Alfonso as we left, uh, he had reported that they were taking things that they shouldn't be, um, taking. Um. All these, all these three truckloads left county property. During this time, the county manager continued to text the clerk. Um, multiple times and did email the clerk. Stating that this is county property. And it can only be given away by, uh, the commission, the commission. And that, um, I directed her to bring the items back or I would contact state police. At about six-oh-nine PM. You see a new vehicle, um. Looks like to me a silver Ford, or excuse me, silver Dodge in a trailer. And if you look, you can identify the individuals. But all this property was picked up from three previous pickup loads. And now dropped off at the clerk's new office. Do you have any, uh, steals of the furniture being taken into the clerk's office at that time, Almandale? Okay. So it does appear, well, it doesn't appear, uh, there's video footage showing that all this property was taken. Off county property, taken to an unknown location. Like I said, we, um, have an, an idea where it was taken to. Um, after several texts and an email, uh, the clerk, uh. And others brought the property back and put it in a new office where it was supposed to go in the first place. Um, I do think that that. Could constitute theft under New Mexico statute thirty dash sixteen dash one. I do believe, uh, some of those desks were built into the, um. Office space in the old clerk's office. Um, there was, uh, um, has been admitted that some of it was damaged and that could be, uh, criminal damage. Uh, under thirty fifteen dash one, New Mexico, um, criminal statute. I would agree with the county. I would agree with the county treasurer. I think this could have been handled a lot better. We do need to be working together as a county. We should not have these kind of issues uh taking place. I, the uh steals that are showing are those statutes uh for the crimes that I just cited. If you go down, do we have one that I sent you with the property inventory? This is a property inventory that I had Mike take to the Cofex County Clerk, uh trying to identify exactly what was taken. Um, basically, it's just penciled on there. Nothing was disposed of. All furniture is in the clerk's office and a signature. So even this, if we're gonna be taking furniture out, should have probably had itemized exactly what we were taking. That would be good management. At this time, I would probably make a recommendation to the county, cause I've seen the area. I've seen the desks that were ripped out. Um, I think probably the best course of action would be to reallocate funds from the clerk's budget to the treasurer's budget. Let the treasurer replace uh the furniture. Um, and I think probably a reasonable estimate at this time. I know when I I've uh talked to the treasurer uh and the treasurer elect. And um I think uh the original number that was kind of thrown out was like thirty thousand. I think probably a much more conservative amount to begin with uh would be to reallocate ten thousand dollars from the clerk's budget. Uh, give it to, uh allocate it to the uh treasurer. And then have the treasurer buy what she needs. And then if she needs more or additional um funding uh to, for that office, uh she can certainly come to the commission and um ask for those funds. I think that's a reasonable uh request at this time. And that would be my recommendation to the commission.
Thank you, County Manager.
Chairman Treheal?
Yes.
The, like I said, we, they did pull out the one desk out of the thing. It is there. We took our filing cabinets out. Um, we didn't have to make note when we took the filing cabinets out uh that were there as well. And it's, you know, um, we took what we needed to run our office. The tables that we are going to use will be used in the uh for the early voting so that people can actually come in and sit down when they vote. So um, you know, the other two tables that were left up there, I would like to put our um viewer for our microfiche and for our newspapers on those. That way, when people come in to view those documents, they have access to it.
Thank you.
And one more thing, those, whether it makes any good uh anything, uh, we did, uh, those were purchased out of the clerk's recording fees that can be used. So we, for every document that is recorded, the clerks get amount, certain amount of money. That money was purchased, that was used back in about two thousand, I believe, when Barbara Castillo was here. That was used to purchase that equipment. Hence, it's belongs to the clerk's office.
Commission, Commissioner Kern?
No comment.
Mister Ware? Your mic.
I I do have questions, so if the equipment was taken off in three loads, I I don't understand where it went to before it came back.
I believe they went to get some dollies to try and help to to move it with the dollies.
But they unloaded it from the truck and went to and got two more loads and loaded each load. And they did that somewhere offsite?
Uh, retired uh law enforcement officer for twenty eight years. On the video presentation that you've seen that Mr. Gore presented, it was, I don't know what his intent was, like a crime, a uh act of crime or something, or thief, theft. But what you've seen was that it wasn't county employees helping those ladies in that office move that furniture. You passed by and just looked. Now, what kind of man does that? Lazy one. It was three women, county uh clerk, my wife, and they had to go get their boyfriends to come and help. That's the three truckloads you seen, back and forth going. They took that equipment to a holding facility down the road where you said by Longfellow School. That's the house of that lady right there. They weren't trying to hide it. They weren't trying to stash it, steal it in broad daylight. Cameras all over, come on. You're presenting a case like this is a criminal act. Oh, beside the statues, so on and so forth, fine. But there's no intent that they're gonna steal those desks and all that good stuff. Those desks belong to, they came out of her account, the county clerk's account, then come out of Lydia's account. And if they didn't need them, they would have left them there. There's no criminal intent. You know, you're trying to portray, oh, you know, these are criminals. These were ladies that were on on their own doing a man's job. Which the janitor should have even helped them. They refused to by orders of this beast.
Okay, it's inappropriate.
Well, you know what I mean. Okay, but nobody helped them. What do you expect these women to carry heavy desk? Their boyfriends and myself. That was my truck you seen with the trailer. We moved that stuff back in, what, time-wise? You're looking at thirty minutes from the time you seen them moving the equipment out to the time we were back thirty minutes. Is that a criminal act? Not. Those desks and everything was taken to a storage unit at her house that she had room for, for the meantime, because there was no room to put them in the new building. So that's why you've seen
Is that seven oh eight, Martinez Street?
County Attorney?
Uh, yes, sir. I think uh the chairman, I think you need to uh declare a quorum uh uh of the forum at this time, sir, as a chairman, uh making sure that the, we are not uh making any type of comment relating to this matter. And then if they uh each party, you know, each party has, you know, the right to have their own independent counsel or legal advice later, but not at the public meeting at this time, uh it it'll uh it'll affect the any parties involved in this matter. So I suggest that the, we do not uh uh have any more conversation about the, whether or not this can, this can constitute criminal action at this time, because it'll affect uh the, you know, the eh, the the right involving everybody in this matter, sir.
Thank you. We're not, we're not talking about any, thank you, County Attorney. And just to be clear, we're not talking of any criminal acts. We're just showing where, where property did go. And from my understanding, it's the commission, no matter where the property is, it's the commission's responsibility for that property.
Who took it? You know, I was involved in it also. From the time he left the county building to the time he went to the storage, to the time he came back, back into a county building. You know, it seems like it's all emphasized on, he left from her old office. We took it to the garage, the storage unit or garage and brought it back within hour or so, thirty minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Right now, the material or the desk and everything sit at the clerk's office. And I'm sure you weren't seeing or somebody did.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. So, Commission, I, I do ask that we just try to help the the treasurer and the new treasurer elect into their office. Um, is there anything further from?
Still didn't make sense. I don't know why you go to a holding location when you can take it right across the street. It was covered area. If you're waiting, somebody was only gonna come in thirty minutes. Just leave it on the porch. It doesn't make any sense. And now they had to load it and unload it twice. That makes, the fact that it's heavy makes a good reason why it shouldn't have been handled twice. And it was moved into different vehicles. I know it was, it just doesn't, it's not logical. He made three trips anyhow. He went, he picked up three times. He went all the way to the storage unit three times. Then he made two trips back. That just doesn't make sense. It's illogical.
Okay, okay, Lawrence.
Okay, thank you. Mister Ware, anything further?
Yeah.
None? Mister Kern?
No comment.
Okay. So, I guess no action needs to be taken at this time since we don't have a, a true dollar amount yet. Once we do, Madam Treasurer asks you please come back to the commission and and talk to us. Thank you. So, moving on to item number twenty nine, discussion action, department inventory. So Commissioners, this is something I, I'm bringing to you and I'm requesting that we have all department heads probably by October fifteenth. Just with these issues with the desks and also from my first now year and a half being as a commissioner, I, I, I see that a lot of this. So it's, and correct me, Commissioner Kern, if I'm wrong, but anything over five thousand is actually recorded on a state level, correct, as far as?
It's on the, yeah.
Okay, so anything below five hundred thousand is an inventory, or, yeah, anything below five thousand. Oh, jeez, sorry. Anything below the five thousand dollar limit is kept at the department head's inventory. So what I'm requesting is each department head, I'm not looking for a dollar amount. I'm looking for a, a, an account of the property that is there uh be given to uh Taren Jacomo or Special Projects Coordinator. And this way, the, just the county has a good idea of, of inventory that is in each department. And like I said, I can't tell you the last time these inventories were given to the commission. And also, this will help us with the to-come auction that I'd like the county to have. When these departments are doing their inventory, they could see what they need and what they don't need and what the county can get rid of. So, I'd like to hear your thoughts, Commissioner Kern.
I mean, the, the county does a capital inventory every year and the commission has to approve that. Um, the financial specialist position has always done that in the past. Um, but that is the, the more expensive items in that. Um, like you said, the, the uh department heads kind of have an inventory of what they, they have within their offices below that. And, you know, anytime there was surplus, it always went to the fifth floor and then it was game for whoever needed it. Um, I don't, I think the department head should be keeping an inventory, but you need to set a value on it too. I mean, are we, you know, anything over fifty bucks needs to be inventoried? What, you know?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with fifty bucks. I don't care for, I mean, it'd be nice to have chairs and other stuff like that. I mean, I see, I see departments where they're purchasing toolboxes and saws and everything else. I mean, I understand a saw blade, but I mean, I, I still have saws from my grandfather. You know what I mean? So I just, the question why we always are buying certain things and I'd like to have an inventory of it. Um, and then if it goes below the five thousand dollar limit, then it's not really, there's still a lot of good stuff that's below five thousand dollars that it's, it's the people's property. And, and I just want to be able to say as a commission, we're doing our job and properly reviewing these inventories. So I'd say yes, anything over fifty dollars. Cause I don't, I don't, I mean staplers, whatever, if they break. You know, I don't care for box paper, stuff like that, but just general inventory. Commissioner Ware?
Uh, so both of the inventories we're discussing are required to be filed with your audit annually. So, we should contact our auditor and see what was submitted in uh for the last uh financial audit. Um, and in those audits, con- consumables are required to be inventoried. So that even, that goes all the way down to the staples, much less the staplers. Uh, so, um, now, you know, the auditor will take a sampling of those, uh depending upon how many items you have, a half a dozen and verify that they're actually there and that the price attributed to them is reasonable. Uh, they don't check every single thing, so uh there is a opportunity for your inventories not to be accurate. But they are both, both a capital inventory and a non-capital inventory are required to submit it annually with your audit. So we should have that information.
We should have.
And it's actually viewable when we approve the audit. It's actually one of the work papers in the audit.
Well, then we, in the past, we had always approved the capital list itself. That inventory on an annual basis, separate from the audit.
So I think it's fair and reasonable to have uh, have the op, the inventories updated and and given to the commission by October fifteenth. Is there any, are you, you guys okay with that, Commissioner?
It's fine.
Commissioner Ware?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, can we have a?
Mister Kern said, is that a motion?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Or I'll make the, okay, thank you. Commissioner Ware made motion?
And seconded it.
I'll second.
Mister Kern. Mister Ware.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Items thirty through thirty four have been struck from the agenda. Moving on to item number thirty four, uh manager's docket, County Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, right now, the manager uh in my uh office, we're currently working on our audit. Um, which is due Friday, so um, a lot of my staff has been heavily engaged in that. Um, we did get the two in-house positions posted. Um, and a little bit of good news, um, I did get notification that on our ICIP for the airfield lighting, rehab beacon replacement and land acquisition um at the airport, a total of uh nine hundred, nine hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars uh has been awarded. So once again, I think a lot of the hard work, um, and I have to give Chairman Forhill, I'll, I'll, some credit on this. He has been um working with Senator Campos, legislators, um private individuals um to really um build our airport. He's been looking for snow equipment. And um right now, I think a lot of the momentum that we have um for that airport is just incredible. And uh as uh reported previously, we uh continue to get, uh, we just did the apron. And uh I know Mike is working um diligently with Scott on hangars. Um, Scott, the manager up there, uh last conversation, told me that there's at least twelve individuals wanting to put up um uh use the lease option uh uh to put in uh their, their, their leased hangars. So I think things are going uh, going very well with the airport. Um, the last thing that I'll say is the commission acted absolutely correctly by having New Mexico State Police investigate all allegations, including my college transcript. Um, when this issue came up in, I think it was January. My college transcript, um, my transcript from the FBI National Academy, all of that, all those issues that Mr. Rayell have been unfounded by the New Mexico State Police. There is no truth to any of his allegations. Um, my college transcript was uh given to the New Mexico State Police so that they could review it. It was reviewed as a original. There are no issues. So, once again, um, sorry that issue keeps coming up. But it's been investigated by a third party credible law enforcement agency and there are no issues. And with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else on my docket.
Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Kern? Or, sorry, we'll move on to Commissioner's docket. I'm, I'm thirty five.
Um, just a few questions and a couple of comments. Um, question for Manager Gore. Um, could you tell me what the status of uh the plaque that we requested for Mr. Rockenfield is?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Commissioner Kern?
I said, what is the status of the plaque that was requested to recognize Mr. Rockenfield for thirty years of voluntary fire chief service?
Vice Chair Kern, we, uh, are on that. Um, currently the Fire Marshal is looking at different plaques and things like that. One of the things that I did have him, uh, uh, one of the things I instructed him to do. Was to look to ensure that if he uses fire funds, that it doesn't, uh, create an issue with anti-donation. But we, uh, are on it. And we're gonna make sure that he gets the recognition that he gets, I think anybody that, uh, contributes thirty years, uh, to a county or a municipality should certainly be recognized. But I will check with the Fire Marshal and see what we're at in that process.
Okay, thank you. Um. Just, uh, on a, on a comment basis, um, you recently put out a press release on behalf of the commission. Um. I, I would ask that if you're gonna speak on behalf of the commission, that we all see the press release before it goes out. Um, because we may have some comments about that. Um, I, it's my understanding that the chairman asked you to do that and that's fine, but, uh. When speaking on behalf of the commission, I believe all the commissioners should be able to comment on the, the press release before it goes out. Um. In, in going through a lot of this budget stuff and that, you know, we've, we've kind of beat the horse for the last ninety days, I did go back into, um. Looking at some of last year's stuff, um, at one point, we had approved a truck for the maintenance department to come out of capital. Um, what, I, and I couldn't find in the budget anywhere that that had actually been purchased, can you elaborate on that or?
Um, Vice Chair Kern, I can, uh, I, I can talk to both issues. Um, as far as the press release, uh, you're correct, I was asked by the chairman, uh, to produce a press release based on. Constituents, uh, calling and wanting to know what was going on. Also, I do think that as a county manager, as a county commission, we have to uphold the public trust. So when questions come up about what's occurring with our budget and what's going on, I totally agreed with the chairman. That we needed to put out a press release. I contacted, um, our, um. Contracted, uh, finance specialist, I guess, Ty. And went through exactly what was appropriate to, uh, put onto the press release. Uh, made sure that everything was factual. And then I had, uh, county attorney, uh, review it to make sure that everything was good. I did send that out and I know I got one compliment from, uh, from the press, um, that we were being transparent. To answer your question specifically. Um, I will go ahead and on, uh, future press releases, uh, Vice Chair, I'll go ahead and include you in those. So if you have any comments or concerns, those can be addressed. As far as the pickup truck, uh, that was ordered. Um. For maintenance and we were getting ready to, um. Actually purchase that, we were days away from purchasing, uh, the truck. That's when, uh, I became aware of the condition of the budget. Uh, the significance of the budget issue, that was on last year's budget. Um, I did, uh, uh, feel that right now the county should not be, um, buying any additional trucks or vehicles. Until we could get a handle on where this budget was going. And Vice Chair, as you are aware from sitting in these meetings, our budget is significantly challenged. So I did direct, um, the maintenance director, uh, not to, um, execute the purchase of that vehicle. Uh, prior to doing that, I did contact legal, uh, to see if there were any issues or concerns that, um. Um, taking that type of action would have, I was advised that there were not, so that's why we didn't pick up the vehicle.
I'm, I'm confused because our issue is with the, the, um, general fund, which I understand, but this, that vehicle was approved to be purchased out of. Capital outlay, or not capital outlay, but, uh, capital funds in which are, they're two totally different funds. Um, so I'm, I'm not understanding, but, but then we bought one for the road department that wasn't approved by the commission, am I? Um, which was discussed at the last meeting, so, um. Just not wrapping my head around that. And I always was under the understanding that once a, a purchase order was, um, accepted by the seller, then it became binding, but I'm not an attorney, so. Um, just.
Um, Vice Chair, when I had my discussion with the, uh, maintenance director, there was no, uh, comment that it was, uh, anything, uh, any kind of a capital improvement or a grant. Um, it was, uh, uh, the belief at the time that this was, um, to be taken out of general fund. Um, and I acted accordingly and, uh, under that belief, I, uh, I did act accordingly. Um.
Well, if it was coming out of general fund, you did act accordingly, but it was, uh. And on the, the way I read it is, is that it was budgeted to come out of capital, so.
We'll certainly look into that as well, uh, Vice Chair Kern. And on the other truck, um, the reason that that was approved is once again, um. The, uh, road, uh, superintendent, um, had been advised, um, that, um, there was, there would be money in there. Uh, they went into a line item, there was not money in the line item. Um, however, um, that was approved before we had any idea, uh, that there were problems with the budget. The, uh, other vehicle, I was made aware that there were problems with the vehicle and made that, uh, decision.
Um, I guess the only, the only other thing that I would like to say, well, a couple of things, um. As far as what happened at the beginning of this meeting and stuff, I've been advised by my attorney not to, not to comment, um. Um, but I will say that I am strong belief that the county is in violation of its own policy. Um, in closing, I would like to thank the Sheriff's Office and New Mexico State Police for their, um. Quick response and actions, um, there in Maxwell last week, I think you're all very aware of what I'm talking about. Um, as a result of, of their, their quick response, um, I believe a potential extremely dangerous and disastrous. Um. Situation was averted, um, this took place when. Our school was, um, at lunch, playground was full of kids, the cafeteria was full of, um, mid-school and high school kids. And, um, it's, it's unfortunate that a young man lost his life, but I do believe wholeheartedly that, uh. That it, it could have been a, a hell of a lot worse. Um, so Sheriff, thank you. Uh, State Police, probably not listening, but thank you. And, um, this is why I campaigned, um, strongly that, uh, I was a proponent of public safety. And I will continue to strongly support public safety. Because if we don't have that, we're not gonna have economic development, we're not gonna get people to come to this area and, um. It's unfortunate, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kern, Commissioner Weir? No comments? No public, no, okay. Uh, Commissioners, so I do want to, sorry, I have a little list, um. Going with this budget and over the budget session. So I would like all of our grants to either be managed or overseen by our grant writer. And our grant writer communicate with our financial specialist or CPA to make, making sure we're. We're meeting all the requirements and proper funds are there and we know easily that if it's an in-kind or a dollar match. Um, I'm gonna ask for a budget review from Ty, I wanna see what we've, uh, how the process went. What issues came up? Um, how we kind of dealt with them and how can we do better moving forward? So those, those are the issues that I'd like, so. County Manager, if you'd please get with Ty, see an expectation or get a date that we could have this and get back to us. I also would like to have, since we are one point two million over, that we could only, we can't pull from our, our savings and reserves for, forever. So what I'm, I'm proposing to the commission is we hold special budget workshops, uh, for each department and that's starting, uh, after our budget review. And I know, uh, I'll get with Madam Clerk, because I know she has an election coming up too, so I, I wanna make sure refit around her schedule. But, uh, I'd like to go through each individual department's budget. Look at this, look at last year's expenses to this year's expenses and just review everything and the commission get a good. Good understand of each department and what they are, what they are doing. So, I'd also ask for Ty in June to create a policy, um, where line items can no longer go negative. Uh, and before any kind of transfer that occurs, it has to come to the commission for approval. I'd also liken this policy, and these could probably be just amendments to the financial policy. But by the weekly, I would like to see bi-weekly budgets sent to the department heads as well, so they're educated and upkept on where their money is. Uh, I believe this will help with expenditures. And I would also like the financial specialist or the CPA to report to the commission monthly on department expenses. So I'm not saying it count for every expense and this can be when we approve expenditures, but she could state, you know, Commissioner, I want you to be aware of that. You know, X department is getting close to running out on this line item. I have notified them of this issue and they may be coming forward with you for a bar or something, but at least it keeps us in the loop once a month. On the condition of each department's budget and they'll report to us. I'd also like to kind of see a two-year audit of, of Triatic with our financial specialist. And I don't know if this, this is just me talking, throwing out the idea and I'm not sure how this would occur. But I'd like to make sure that everything's being properly entered into Triatic, that is our software that we use to manage that. And in doing so, it will. Give another insight to making sure the county is in the right direction. Um, one other policy that I would like to see is EFTs for all employees, getting their paycheck electronically. Pay stubs via email, if they want to print them, they're welcome to print them on county paper and do that. Um, also, even with our, our purchasing, if we have any vendors that will accept EFT payments, I prefer to do that. Uh, it would save, it'd cut down on time, it'd cut down on envelopes, papers, stamps, you name it. Um, also, I did talk to the county manager, we got checks that are being sent out for like six dollars. It costs us probably thirty dollars to make a check. So, we need to really look, the department heads and the county manager really need to look at. At how we are doing business, because by the time we redo it, we're just losing money and I understand some things are needed, but maybe it's just better planning or something. Uh, so that kind of goes, that completes my, my little requests. I did want to state that we did, uh, I did get the documents from State Aviation for the one point four million. And then including our match, so it's be one point five for commercial aviation into Angel Fire. Um, so I'll have that on our next agenda for approval. The match will also be split with, uh, the Angel Fire Resort, which county manager and county attorney, we probably need to get some kind of document. Approving that before we approve our, our actual grant agreement with State Aviation. Um, they also said there's gonna be fifty to one hundred thousand dollars in advertising funds available to help assist with this. Uh, we did meet with Advanced Air, Advanced Air is still willing to work with this and we're, I know. The Angel Fire Resort, along with the Town of Angel Fire, have worked and reviewed the peak times within the Moreno Valley. Um, to see when the most guests are up there, when we could possibly provide flights to there. So we have Advanced Air reviewing those and seeing how that will go, but I also got reassurance from Advanced Air. That they are gonna be advertising, uh, far and wide to help pack these flights. So it should be a good boost to the Moreno Valley and to our airport, so with landing fees, fuel, uh, fuel expenditures, et cetera. I did wanna, uh, talk to, point on another grant we got as well, this is from a broadband grant, this is from the Office of State Broadband with Mexico, they gave us seventy-two thousand dollars. This was used to conduct, it's going to be used to conduct engineering, uh, on the east side of Raton, going out towards Allen Alley. Uh, from Maxwell to the French Track community and from the UU Bar out to Miami to get broadband internet out there, the engineering completed. Along with that is a five-year, uh. Paid subscription to get the Assessor's GIS system placed online. So that will get that done, as I know something the Assessor's been wanting for some time. Uh, the big ultimate goal of this is to get broadband to everywhere and I've been working with the city of Raton. The city of Raton was awarded a hundred thousand dollars from OBE and they're gonna be using this to implement broadband in our area. Uh, helping get our constituents' support for funding, et cetera, through the government. But also we've been working with a company called Resound Energy, they put in for a federal grant for forty-five million dollars. And they're looking to, once awarded, I think they'll have a three million dollar match, but they're gonna go from the east side of Raton out to Allen's Alley. Um, to place fiber internet all on the east side going out, so. And everything to the west of, of Second Street here in Raton is getting fiber this summer. Also, when I say the east side, I'm also encompassing north side of Raton, north of I twenty-five and that area as well. Would be getting fiber through Resound if that grant does go through. Um, I think the county manager may have touched on this, but I did want to just reiterate it. That we did get an email just earlier this morning from, uh, Sen- Senator Lujan's office. Where our congressional directed spending for our Angel Fire Airport snow removal equipment has. Passed the preliminary round and is, is in the appropriations at the congressional level for four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So, uh, I'm gonna be reaching out to senators, our senators and encouraging their push for this now that we have commercial airports too and only go to help. Um, I did want to thank, uh, Mr. Sandoval there with the, all he's doing with the vector control. Uh, please, please do your best to keep up, I just heard on the radio this morning that the, the West Nile virus was actually detected in Union County. Um, so I know a lot of our, our ranchers have their horses, constituents have horses. Uh, this West Nile was detected in a human, he's doing fine, uh, from what the radio had said. And lastly, I guess with, uh, Romero, I, I'd just ask, uh. Our procurement, if, if we could get the signed copy that the commission did, but maybe email it to, to me or the county attorney, both of us. Uh, and then I would like to look at that and then Ms. Romero could also send her, her contract to us, that we could look at it. And if she has amendments to the contract, then it needs to come before the commission again. And we could get this, uh, hopefully done before our next deadline for our next commission meeting.
Want the, the one from twenty twenty-three and then of course this year?
No, I just need the one from, from this year that reapproved, so. Um, Commissioners, is there any questions on?
I, I would like to see the one from twenty twenty-three if possible, ma'am.
Hey, just throw it in, thank you. Commission, anything else?
Yeah, one, one other question, um. Mr. Gore had mentioned that you had posted two openings, um, and we all know what those. Mister Gore had mentioned that you had posted two openings, um, and we all know what those openings are, but the commission, you know, we do have a hiring fee, so the commission needs to approve those before that posting. And we haven't done that.
County Manager?
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. I believe at the last meeting, uh Commissioner Kern, you had requested that we go ahead and post those in-house. Um, we followed that directive or that request, rather. And um, so those are out, but we are not ready to hire anyone yet. Um, I'm not aware that we've had any applicants apply for those uh positions. Um, as we go through this process and as soon as we get a little bit more information, um, we'll certainly come back to the commission if uh if we need to and ask for approval. Thank you.
And I believe, I may be, I may be mistaken, but I, I believe that uh that I had said the process would be that the commission would approve the opening of the position and then for those to be posted in-house. And in the past, what we did to, when, when we posted them in-house, we sent that posting to all of the department heads. Because if you only posted in this building, um, there's other, the, the yes people, the DWI people, the detention center. Um, none of them ever see it. So we always sent that out to all department heads so that they can post it within their office and.
Thank you, Commissioner Kern.
You're welcome.
So seeing nothing further, we'll move on to item thirty-six adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? They're moving second, Madam Clerk?
Mister Kern.
Yes.
Mister Kern. Chairman, true.
Yes. Thank you.